Good evening, everyone. This is the April 28th regularly scheduled City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you raise or rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance?
...............................................................
Okay, we're on item two, which is citizens' comments. And I have Kathleen Wilson signed up. Would you please come up and give us your comments, please?
Thank you. I'm Kathleen Wilson. I'm the branch manager at the Port Orchard Library. And I am here today as a board member of the Port Orchard Bay Street Association. The board just wanted to extend a huge thank you to the city of Port Orchard, to Mark Dorsey, and the Public Works Department for all of the help that you gave and the wonderful job that the Public Works Department did in pressure washing the downtown sidewalks last week. They look better than they have ever looked. It was so nice to have them do that in the nighttime hours, the overnight, so that there weren't cars in the way. In the past, we've had business owners trying to use pressure washers when cars are parked on the street. And it's not very easy to do. So this was so helpful. And we had our downtown cleanup day on Sunday, and we had over thirty downtown business folks and friends planting all of the planters along the streets. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being there, and Beck for being there. I don't know if I saw everybody that was there. So it was a really wonderful effort by a lot of the citizens. And I just wanted to make sure that the city and the Public Works Department knew how much the Port Orchard Bay Street Association appreciated that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, that was the only sign up, but please come on up and make your comments to the council.
Good evening, Mayor Mathis, council members. I want to say a thank you to your staff. They've been very supportive in helping me prepare for my speech tonight. I am a participant in the leadership class of 2015. And I'm here with my team, Team Shine, sharing hope in the neighborhood every day. And they're all present. We have several Port Orchard members on our team. Rick Feeney, Mark Ergo, Quinn Maugh, Kristy Gaden. And Corey Berg and I are in outer Port Orchard, in the north end. But we're here to talk about our team partner, the Boys and Girls Club of South Kitsap. I have a short video here. It's done for the South Kitsap Puget Sound.
.................. It's a safe place to be and grow. Our kids learn to be accountable. We show them that they are capable of more. They find a passion that keeps them coming back. And they take pride in being role models for tomorrow's young leaders. Boys and Girls Clubs, sponsor a club kid today.
That's an awesome video. Natalie Kuzmic, the director, was the narrator of that video. And our team's goal for this year was to raise community awareness of the Boys and Girls Club and the wonderful program that it is. We had a couple of events earlier. One event, it was the Boys and Girls Club Health and Wellness Fair, where we had a bike rodeo. We have a new event coming up. It's a dodgeball tournament, one of the preeminent activities of the Boys and Girls Club of Sidney Glen Elementary. And we'd like to invite you to the event, May 15th, 5:00 to 7:30 at the Sidney Glen Elementary School. And part of this event is going to be an open house for the Boys and Girls Club members to show off what they do at this club. And it's a wonderful program that promotes character development and discipline and good study habits. You couldn't ask for a better club to invite into a community to really lift up the GPAs, help just provide really good involvement in a community. So I'd like to see also, as part of this event, we're promoting the Boys and Girls Club wishlist off several websites. And it's part to provide program materials, supplies, sponsor children as far as scholarships for their program. So if you have the time, we would love to see you there. It'll be a fun event. And we're hoping that some of the staff of Port Orchard City Police Department will team up and challenge the Fire Department of South Kitsap Fire District.
Okay, yeah. Have you extended that invitation to the Police Department?
I believe it's in negotiation.
It's in negotiations. All right, well, I'll stay out of it then.
Hey, but any help you can lend to that, that would be great.
All right, well, I'll see what I can do.
Hey, thank you very much.
That'd be worth watching, I think.
I think so. I'm looking forward to it. It'll be a fun event, and one we hope to be able to sustain itself into the future.
Okay, now, the folks behind you that you introduced, our Leadership Kitsap students this year will be graduating at the end of this year?
Yes, in June.
Okay. And so you adopted the Boys and Girls Club basically as your project, then?
Right. And we wanted to raise awareness. And part of it was to also develop new community partners. And we did a wonderful job of connecting the Boys and Girls Club to allotted different health, wellness, and safety groups in the community. One of them was the Power Squadron that I can think of. And there was multiple clinicians who also participated in health screening. We even had the master gardeners there. And we just found a lot of like-minded people who wanted to promote and develop more relationships within Port Orchard. And that was the goal of our team, so.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Anyone else wish to address the council? There's another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Last chance. Seeing none, and we'll move on. Counsel, we're at number three, approval of agenda. What's your pleasure?
I move to present the -- or accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the agenda.
A second.
And a second, open for discussion. Changes? Modifications? Okay, seeing none, and we'll be voting on accepting and approving the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to item four, consent agenda. What would be your pleasure with?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion carries. Okay, thank you. We're at item five, a presentation. And where is my -- I would love to read my proclamation. And we have a representative of SerOptimus. Could you come up, please, and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Sharon King, past president of SerOptimus, and I'm here representing the club tonight. They are at McCormick Woods in their regular meeting, so they sent me off with a nice farewell.
Okay. Would you like to read the proclamation, or would you like me to?
I would love for you to read it.
Okay, I would be proud to read it. A lot of information in this I wasn't aware of until I read it, so. Proclamation. Whereas the SerOptimus International Club of South Kitsap County was chartered on March 23rd, 1945, by the SerOptimus International Club of Bremerton, and the SerOptimus International Club of South Kitsap County became SerOptimus International of Port Orchard on July 13th, 1974. And whereas SerOptimus International of Port Orchard has been a civic leader throughout its history, and the SerOptimus International of Port Orchard strives to improve the lives of women and girls in our community and around the world. And whereas SerOptimus International is celebrating its 70th anniversary in our community, I now therefore, Timothy C. Mathis, Mayor of Port Orchard, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as SerOptimus International of Port Orchard Month. And in the city of Port Orchard, I call upon all employees and citizens of the city of Port Orchard to observe this month with appreciation and recognition thereof. And I signed it tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Now, that being said, I have tickets to this wonderful event on Friday from 5:00 to 8:00, I think we're 5:00 to 8:00 or 5:00 to 9:00, over at the pavilion. So any of you that would like tickets, raise your hand, and I'll make sure I get them to you. We want you all to come. We're going to have a lot of history that's going to be seen there of our years of service to the community. Most of you know, we've funded all the playground equipment down at the Port Orchard Marina. And as a point of information, and I'm working on that now to get it replaced, SerOptimus put in the water fountain that Fred was, for a lack of words, complaining that it was yanked out of the ground the other day.
Okay.
So I'm proposing to SerOptimus that we fund a new water fountain for downtown Port Orchard in recognition of our 70th anniversary.
There's something else. I didn't realize that you had installed that to start with.
That's your education lesson on SerOptimus now.
That's my education for the night.
Okay.
Okay, and I will be getting two tickets, by the way.
Two tickets, okay. We would love to extend the invite to all of you to come. It's ladies' night out, so it's going to be busy downtown with Bobby stuffing 700 bags, getting ready for all the women to merge downtown. But we still would love for you all to come. And we're going to have a beer and wine event, silent auction, and a dessert auction. So you can --
This is one of your fundraisers?
It is a fundraiser. We used to do our big fantasy and February auction, which would usually net us about $30,000 to help fund our scholarship program and the other projects that we do. However, we all got kind of burned out, as some of us do in projects. And so we decided to go a little bit smaller for our 70th birthday celebration. So we're looking forward to it. We've been in this community serving you for a long time.
For 70 years. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item six, public hearing. There isn't a public hearing scheduled, so we'll move on to item seven, first item of the business. Mr. Dorsey, could you tell us about 7A, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. On both February and March 20th, 2015, the city of Port Orchard Public Works Department advertised a request for proposal within the Port Orchard Independent and the Daily Journal of Commerce, bid schedules A through E of the 2015 Bethel Road Improvement or Bethel Road Pavement Repair Project. The city also uploaded the bid documents to the Washington Builder Exchange. By the April 3rd, 2015 deadline, the city received the following bids with applicable tax. I don't really need to read all those numbers. Suffice to say that Granite, Miles, Tucci Lakeside, Lake Ridge, and Puget all bid. The bids ranged from a low of 1.289, 1.3 million to a high of 1.96 million for total. And then they're broken into their individual schedules. If anybody's interested in getting the actual bid tab, they can get that from the Public Works Department. Upon review and verification of references, the city's Public Works Department staff has determined that Puget Paving and Construction Incorporated's bid of $615,179 for Schedule C was the lowest qualified bid. Additionally, the Public Works Department has confirmed that the bidding requirements for public work was followed and that the project proposal is fully funded within the approved 2015 budget. Under fiscal impact, as I noted, there was an allocation that had to do for the construction administration out of the $700,000 that we budgeted. So that leaves about $675,420. So you can see that there's about $60,000 still in the budget. My hope is that we'll identify the work in the field, and then as we're out identifying the work, we can go into the, I think, the Schedule B area, which is between Valueer Court and Salmonberry, and mark those specific areas, and then come back to the council, depending on the value, with an actual change order to just do, not do all of Schedule B, but to pick up those bad areas in front of Wendy's or, you know, between that area, and cover it as a change order process through the contract. So with that, staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to approve contract 049-15 with Puget Paving and Construction in an amount not to exceed $615,179 for the 2015 Bethel Road Pavement Repair Project, Schedule C only. And knowing that we'll be doing the additional schedules in the additional future, and this isn't to be confused with the Bethel Corridor project.
Okay, yes.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute contract number 049-15 with Puget Paving and Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $615,179 for the 2015 Bethel Road Pavement Repair Project, Schedule C only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor for comments, discussions. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mark, for getting this done. And because this is a start to the commitment I think we need to make to our streets, particular Bethel Corridor, Tremont, to get these projects done and make our streets safer, more drivable. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I just wanted to share a quick story. So my daughter came home from school the other day and shared with me that one of the class project discussions was Bethel needing to be paved. And she's 12, so it's a seventh grade class. And I told her that it was on tonight's agenda, and hopefully we'll be able to approve that and get some of that stuff going through and getting worked on, so. Long time getting there, and I think the citizens definitely will appreciate it, so.
Probably safe to manage her expectations by letting her know that we're doing only Schedule C.
I told her what it was. I told her it's only going up to Taco Time, but we'll, you know, a little bit at a time, you know.
Good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're going to be voting on 7A, approval of contract with Puget Paving and Construction, as read into the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Thank you. That motion carries. 7B, approval of contract with Kitsap Harbor Tours. Ms. Reiterson, could you tell us about this one, please?
Yes. Good evening, mayor, council. For the past few years, the city has partnered with the Port of Bremerton and the city of Bremerton to provide additional foot ferry service during the summer. The reason for the additional hours of foot ferry service is to provide citizens the opportunity to participate in festivals, farmers' markets, and evening activities in a hopes of bringing tourists from outside the community, which could result in higher tourism dollars. Each entity has provided their preference of days and times of the foot ferry service, and they have agreed to the terms and conditions outlined in the agreement that's presented. And I would like to note that there is a revised schedule that I believe the council received earlier. And the revision is just changing the hours on the Fourth of July. There will already be -- regular service for Kitsap Transit will be running until 8:00 PM. So the contract will only pick up from 8:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Based on the -- yep.
Mr. Clausen.
I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion because of my position at Kitsap Transit.
All right, thank you.
And I probably should make aware again that I'm the HR director. I don't sign contracts for KT in this regard. If anybody has a concern for me being here, I will also recuse myself.
We'll see anybody?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Ashby, you have your -- No, I just had a question. That Kitsap Transit is running on the holiday?
Correct. And I did confirm with Kitsap Harbor Tours, which they confirmed with Kitsap Transit, that they will be running regular hours on Saturday. However, they will be closed. They are taking the holiday for Friday, the day before, July 3rd. So there will be no foot ferry service on July 3rd in honor of Fourth of July. Which, from what I understand, there isn't any events that the other partners or our city would be interested in providing that additional service. So we were able to save a little bit of dollars to pick it up from 8:00 PM to midnight.
Is it the Third, though, just a normal business day? And we're not going to have --
Nothing running on the Third at all?
Nope.
It's a Thursday.
Is City Hall open on Friday the Third?
Excuse me?
Is the City Hall open on Friday the Third?
We will be closed in honor of --
Okay. So it's a holiday?
I believe Transit's closed on Friday the Third because the contract with the labor union states a holiday on Saturday will be observed on Friday. So I believe the agency will close on the Third.
So most government agencies or federal governments will be closed on Friday.
Yeah, so I wonder if the shipyard's closed. Have you heard, Brandy?
I do not know.
I guess we'll hear.
Based on the conversation that I had with Rick, that was the assumption that he had for the reason why that they were probably taking that Friday off.
Oh, okay.
And then, so based on the projected ridership, the total cost of the proposed services will be approximately $26,000, with the city of Port Orchard's portion being approximately $6,500. Staff recommends approving the contract as amended and presented. How's that?
Mr. Mayor? I move to approve the contract authorizing the mayor to execute a joint agreement between the city of Port Orchard, the city of Bremerton, and the Port of Bremerton for annual summer foot ferry services in an amount not to exceed $6,500.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Lucarelli.
Brandy, it says $26,000, but we're only paying $6,500. So where's the rest coming from?
$6,500 will be coming from the city of Bremerton. $5,500 will be coming from the Port of Bremerton. And based on the estimated cash revenue received in 2014, we estimate that $11,439 would be received. So would the total revenue that I'm projecting that the city will receive is $29,000 for a difference or an overage of $3,700.
Thank you.
So should we not have the attendance as we did last year? For this year, we have about $3,700 to offset that. But we're hoping to market and advertise to get more service to reduce those dollars.
And we're not adding anything to, we're not speculating that we'll do better.
Correct. It's same as last year is what I projected for revenues. And I consulted with the city of Bremerton's clerk, and she agreed with the same numbers, projection-wise.
Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of the council, at our work-study session, we had felt that we didn't need any extra hours on Friday or Saturday evenings. However, our partners, the Port of Bremerton and the city of Bremerton, are planning a Rock the Dock concert series on Saturdays during the summer. And they appreciated or wanted an extra hour on Saturday evenings. And that was why we extended it the hour on Saturday to meet our partners' needs.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, any other information? If not, then we'll be voting on business item 7B as read into the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion carries. Thank you. 7C, approval of council meeting minutes.
Mayor, if I may, I believe the city council should have received revised minutes. Those minutes?
Yes, one with the little red revised on it.
Perfect, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes as revised.
Well, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as revised. Open the floor for any corrections or any comments. Seeing none, and we're going to be approval of April 14th minutes as corrected, as revised. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion carries.
Can I recuse myself?
Okay, very good. Let the record show, Mr. Childs recuses himself.
You mean abstained? He abstained?
He abstained.
Oh, he abstained, okay.
I'm sorry.
I've got -- okay. 7B, approval of April 15th, special joint council and planning commission meeting minutes.
Do we have a motion? I move approval of the planning commission and city council meeting minutes of April 15th as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion, changes?
Did you want me to explain why they're on the, I don't know, this kind of sense of hesitation as to why they're on the council meeting minutes or on the council agenda?
We would have pulled them to, because two of us need to abstain.
And that it was a joint, but it was put together by the planning commission, but technically there was a quorum of the council. So we have to bring it before the council for your approval of the minutes, so, just for that clarification. Okay.
Is this discussion time?
Yes.
Well, my only thought was that, I guess I can't discuss this, can I? Actually, because I wasn't here. So never mind. I take it back.
Well, let's see here. Now.
You have a motion and a second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion carries.
With questions?
Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Abstentions. Business item 7B, Mr. Allen was called away kind of suddenly, so he was not, he's not in attendance.
I'll be reading that. So you'll be taking care of that, okay. The Port of Bremerton contacted the city asking for its financial participation in constructing a coverage structure at the observation area at the Marina Park. The coverage structure will provide shelter for weddings, parties, family reunions, and other events. The port is seeking community donations in addition to the city's participation. The council finance committee heard a presentation by port staff regarding the project, including the proposed use of the coverage structure, the economic viability, architectural considerations, and other options the port considered. The council finance committee felt the project was in keeping with the city's participation with the port regarding the waterfront, enhances the Bay Street pedestrian pathway, and provides a public benefit to the citizens of Port Orchard. The port is requesting $5,500 from the city to help in the cost of construction, which has been estimated to range between $17,500 to $22,000. It is proposed that the port will obtain all necessary permits and approvals. The city would contribute up to $5,500 towards cost of construction upon project completion. It is the port's desire to construct the coverage structure in 2015. The council finance committee recommends advancing the request to the full council for consideration. The committee, as well as the mayor, supports providing financial support.
Okay, thank you. And I was going to ask Mr. Clausen to weigh in because I was not available to be at that finance committee meeting when the port made a presentation. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Clausen?
Well, to get in on the floor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum agreement between the Port of Bremerton and the city of Port Orchard for improvements at the Marina Park. That would include an expenditure of an unbudgeted amount of $5,500.
Very good. Is your second still good? All right, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussion.
Under discussion, this did come before the finance committee. We discussed and talked about the issue. And we think that this is just kind of a continuation of the partnership that we've established with the Port of Bremerton, and it will be a good addition to the waterfront for the community, so the committee is supportive of it.
Yes, sir.
I would just add, for the people that are listening, wherever they are, and the audience, and I think the council knows what I'm gonna say, but the Port of Bremerton, during the process of doing that segment in the park, there was a little conflict about whether that segment was gonna go into the park or not. And they kind of extended themselves to do something that they were a little unsure that they wanted to do. And in that process, it actually saved us a couple hundred thousand dollars in the design and construction of those two segments. And so, to me, it's a big deal to, and a kind of payback to show them that we are real partners with them and, and will work in the future on the waterfront. But this is a small token, I think, of our payback, and I think it's a valuable thing that they're doing, and so I'm for it.
Any other, any other comments?
Well, I agree, having a covered area down at the waterfront is just absolutely wonderful.
And the season, a couple of months.
It's gonna be a nice, nice addition.
Anything, Mr. Chance?
Uh, the report references an attachment of a site photograph. Mine doesn't actually have a photograph, it does have a drawing. Yeah, that's, oh, this photograph, thank you.
I printed this off our website, it was not included.
The report actually did provide a couple of photographs.
So it's gonna be like this?
Yeah. And Treasurer Martin selected them to include in the record of the Finance Committee minutes, and surprised it wasn't distributed with this.
Yeah, they initially indicated that they were going to do a tent-like structure, I think, and then they've now decided to do more of a substantial one with eight-by-eight beams and the like, so I think it's gonna be quite nice.
Translucent structure also.
Yeah, translucent.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on 7E, partnership with Port of Bremerton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion carries, thank you. Item 7F, approval of amendment number two. Mr. Bond, could you tell us about that one, please?
Yes, thank you. The city's contract with Ambrosini Design, contract 034-14, expired February 28th, 2015, and per Contract Amendment 1 approved November 25th, 2014. While Ambrosini delivered the project by this date at $1,990 under the figure not to exceed, Public Works has requested some revisions to the design and bid documents, and this work will likely consume the remainder of the contract amount. However, a contract amendment is required in order for the city to pay any bills for work performed after February 28th, 2015. The contract amendment, as presented, would provide through June 30th to complete these requested revisions and won't exceed the original contract amount. The recommendation is to approve Contract Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Amendment Number Two to Contract 034-14.
We have a motion?
Second that.
And we have a second, open the floor for comments and discussions. Comment and discussion, and seeing none.
I, I guess I'd, I guess I do. I'll just say that I wasn't exactly in favor of this contract initially because I was concerned about the city not knowing what the plans are for the waterfront, and no waterfront plan in place, and kind of like the cart before the horse. But this is a promise to, this is money that's available to them to kind of finish up this project. I'm actually disappointed that we've gotten this far and aren't gonna have a sign for our efforts yet, but at least we'll have the design, and I guess we'll approve a contract somewhere down the road for that. But I'll vote for this, but I'm, I'm, you know, I just have a little problem with this whole, this whole plan, but I'm gonna vote to finish the contract.
Thank you, any other comments?
I'm gonna say the same thing. I was actually not in favor of this project, I think it was the timing of it that I was mostly opposed to. Because we don't have a plan in place, I will approve this because I think that the addition just completes our contract and keeps the city in good standing.
Any additional? Seeing none, then, we're going to be voting on approval of Amendment Number Two to the Contract Number 03414. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion carries. Okay, that concludes our business items. We'll move on to report of council committees. Finance Committee, Mr. Clausen.
Uh, just that we did have the Finance Committee on the 24th. The treasurer provided us the sales tax receipts, and we're just about spot-on from our projections for budgets, so we're just a little bit in the black, which is better than being a little bit in the red. Also, the treasurer provided us with a copy of a quarterly report that he's produced, and the committee asked that that document be distributed to the full council. It's a very well-done document, it's an easy read, and it shares pretty much everything that's going on financially with the city. So I just encourage the rest of the council to take a look at it. And I think that's basically it. The finding director was there telling us kind of what's been going on in his world, and things are busy, so.
Okay, thank you. Economic Development and Tourism.
Yes, we will be meeting on May 11th at 10 o'clock here in council chambers. We have not met since the last council meeting.
Utility Sewer Advisory, Mr. Patansu.
Utilities met a week and a half ago. Probably the biggest issue that was on the agenda was the sewer water gap analysis, and that'll be coming, I believe, to our next work-study session, correct, Mr. Dorsey? So we'll all get another look at that. The Sewer Advisory Committee, I think we got the same, had the same meetings we had the week before at, at our city council meeting. The only difference is, is we got to touch the fabric that's gonna go on the dome, pass a little sample of it around to those domes that are gonna go on top of the solids tanks. So, other than that, nothing to report there.
Okay, thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory, or no, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead again. Public Property Committee, Mr. Cartwright.
Our next meeting is May 11th at 8:30 here in chambers.
Public, or I mean Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Mr. Chance.
Just a reminder to council that Brandy emailed us all on the 17th with a spreadsheet of the historical makeup of the Lodging Tax Advisor Committee, and would appreciate your input by this Thursday, the 30th. I haven't done it either, so I will send you recommendations by Thursday.
Thank you. Chimes and lights.
Nothing to report right now.
Waterfront plan, Mr. Childs. Outside Agency Reports, Ms. Ashby.
Yes, KRCC and PSRC have not met since our last council meeting.
Mr. Cartwright, do you have any report? No? Mr. Patansu?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, any others, any other special, yes?
No, Jerry, do. KITA?
Yes.
We don't have a meeting coming up, but we do have the annual retreat, which is a kind of a large work-study session, if you will, with lots of breakouts, and it'll be the formulating, the organization, and getting more in-depth into policies and practicalities of KITA. So I'll be attending that, that's a two-day session coming up in May.
Any other special? For the good of the order, okay, seeing none, then, I'll move on to mayor's report. And I have several good news pieces and a little bit of time, so I'll give them to you. This is a letter I just received from Risk Management Service Agency, RMSA. That's Risk Management Service Agency. And they write, "This year, we are, let's see, we are concentrating on updating our construction information about all of City of Port Orchard buildings." And I just want to remind everyone out there that RMSA, Risk Management Service Agency, is basically our liability insurer. So, they're kind of important people, when they, when they write us a note, we need to pay attention to it. So, Mr. Muldro was assigned the responsibility for assisting with the property inspections for your city. He took the initiative prior to our survey, physically traveling to every location, completing the information form, taking photos of each locations. His effort saved us many hours of time in the field gathering the information. Mr. Dennis, his first name, but Dennis went another step. He saved all the files, approximately 40 locations, and put them on a CD so that we can, that's RMSA, can electronically transfer the information to their databases. To date, they've done 94 members, 94 member cities. Dennis is the only one that has ever done this ahead of time, prior to them coming out for their visit. So I'd like to say Mark, he works for you, right? I think that's just great, I really appreciate that.
He also overs, he was one that put together the POBSA cleanup, so he'll get two kudos.
Very good. Then, for my next announcement, this one is about, well, it's a report Ms. Howard gave me today, and she just completed the spreadsheet of this, and it's an annual summary of work-related injuries and illness report for 2014, it's just completed. But I wanted to tell you, it's not very, in fact, it's very good. I'll just read it to you. There are 14 reported injuries out of 74 employees last year. Seven injuries were minor, and six were OSHA recordable workman's claims for medical only. And she explained that to me, this is something where they would go wrap up an injury or perhaps take, get a few stitches, but there was no downtime. I am pleased to report there was no lost time claims, and keeping the L and I, which is loss and injury cost, down for the city. It's the city's commitment to maintain and monitor a safe, healthy workforce environment for all who, who work for the city. Continue to be committed to our goal to show leadership by setting good examples and to actively participate in identifying ways to make the City of Port Orchard a safe place to work. And I wanted to thank Deb Howard and Alan Martin. Alan Martin is Deb Howard's supervisor, and she's our HR gal. But, they're not here, but I will pass this on to them. And I, did I mention, for the fifth year in a row, we have received the Well City Award? And that's directly, Deb Howard is directly responsible for earning that award for the city. She, she never, never tires of trying to come up with innovational projects that keep, helps keep us well, helps keep us, you know, winning that award. Now, that's, it's really hard to win that award even one time, but we've done it five years consecutively, so. Anyhow, I love reading those, you know, those good news pieces. And so I want to thank both of those individuals, and I will, for, for their extra above-and-beyond-the-duty efforts. So that's my report for tonight. And let's see, so we'll go on to report of department heads, Mr. Dorsey. Oh, okay, Mr. Bond?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Ms. Morris? No? Ms. Reiners, then?
Now I feel really bad because I have some-
All right, you have time, you have time.
They're quick. So I have the signatures from all the council members regarding the KRCC letter in support of keeping the current voting structure. So I will get that off to KRCC first thing in the morning. And then, the other thing is, I just wanted to share with you that I had the opportunity to attend some training Thursday and Friday for the Washington Public Records, what is it? The Washington Association of Public Records Officers. And if you ever get a chance, I know it's probably boring, but if you ever get a chance to attend one of those meetings, it's, it's pretty entertaining. And sometimes I go in there and I think, oh my God, do I need to wear a helmet everywhere I go? Or can I just relieve everything and just walk barefoot around the city? Because there, there's no happy medium, it's just one extreme to the other. And so, they discussed the, I'm not sure if you guys know who Kurt Cobain is, but they discussed the, the photos of, of the autopsy and what's public record and what's not, and what part does it invade the family's right to privacy? And so they, they touched on that, they also touched on the difference between the football players 20 years ago, OJ Simpson, you guys might have heard of him, and the current one, which is the Patriots. It's my son's favorite team, I can't even think, yes, yes. And the difference between the evidence and the photos and in today's world, the video, is what ultimately had some impact on the, on the juries for his conviction because just the videos that we have today and the technology. And then we had the city attorney with City of Seattle, Mary Perry, and she was there talking about how the city is handling the body cams and the amount of storage and the amount of time that it's gonna take if somebody were to put in a public disclosure request and redact that. And it's just entertaining and I just, that's my world and I enjoy it. And sometimes I think, oh my goodness, and you come back to the office and you wanna just kind of change everything, and reality hits, like, yeah. But I have, I have a long list that I can work on, not too long, we're doing, we're doing pretty good. But, yeah, so that's my update. Thank you for allowing me to go.
So Brandy, I'm noticing that you don't think we're very hip over here. OJ Simpson, really? We don't know?
Well, you could be a football fan or not, so. Go Green Bay, sorry.
Okay, we're at the citizen comment period, so if you would like to come up to the mic and make a comment, please do.
Hello, Jerry Harmon. Meeting minutes here, and I'm finding them to be very vague, and they don't tell you anything. And I don't like the new format that you're taking. I mean, it says here that Mr. Nick Whittleton spoke regarding consent agenda items 4D, 4H, and 4, I guess that's an L, and Business Item 7C. Well, what in the heck did he speak about? I would like to know it here, not have to go back and watch tons of video, which at my house is very difficult because I have a very old internet system that wouldn't allow me to do that. So, to me, these minutes are absolutely useless, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Another comment? Please?
Comes Bobby.
I'm Bobby Stewart, I own Old Central Antique Mall, 801 Bay Street. And I just wanted to invite the chamber to come down on Friday night from 5:00 to 8:00. Ladies' night out, but we do allow men, too. And it's really growing each time. Our first one, we gave out maybe 300 bags and little goody bags with all sorts of things in them. And now we're up to 700, and who knows the next one. So we're doing it twice a year, it's growing, I have a great committee, and I would love to see everyone there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Or do them both. Yes.
Hi, I'm Sharon King again, Chair of the 125th Anniversary Party. So I wanted to bring the council up to speed where we are. Fred, we missed you last night, by the way. Things are really getting under control, we're making a lot of progress. We're gonna have squared answers, they have been confirmed. We are still working on an event that hasn't been confirmed yet. Memorabilia is going to be wonderful, the Chamber of Commerce, Matt, they are doing commemorative coings. I don't know when he's gonna have them ready for sale. Fathoms of Fun is doing a Port Orchardopoly game, so buy your squares now. We have a price range that will fit anyone's budget, and these are gonna be a limited collector edition of 250. We want Columbia Bank, obviously, to buy a bank square, so Rob, get your money out. So the Port Orchard party is making progress, we're having a lot of fun, and it was wonderful to have this whole area here last night for our meeting. We'd like that set up every time we have a meeting because it was awesome last night. So we're looking forward to a great big celebration, and thanks, John, for Kitsepp Transit allowing the Carlisle. Hopefully, there's no emergencies, that we can have wonderful tours on that. And when we brought that up last night, everyone was yay, yay, yay. So that was a great addition to what we're doing. So, any questions that anyone has of me? Anything that you'd really like to see for this party coming up?
It's going to be a party the whole weekend, isn't it?
It's going to be a party, because you got the taste of Port Orchard the next day, right after that.
The next day, there's going to be, it'll be nonstop.
Port Orchard's a real swinging town.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, bear with me. I've never actually come to a city council meeting before. I actually originally came here as a freelance writer for the Port Orchard Panem, but I'm also here as an Olympic College student. The Public Communications Club is actually putting on another conference this quarter, and we would love to invite you. This one's all about identity. We are looking for speakers, for anyone who is willing to come in and check things out. We would love to see everybody's faces if possible. Identity is such a diverse concept that there really is no strict sense. You know, you could have a sexual identity, you could have a gender identity, you could have a religious identity, and we would love to come see, come hear about a political identity as well. It's, it's between May 26th and the 28th. At the moment, we don't have any set specific times, but we would love to get in contact with you about possibly having you guys come speak.
Great. Ms. Reinersen there will give you some contact information, and if you get the times ironed out, or the days, whatever you, you know, you come up with, get it to her, she'll get it to everybody up here.
Yeah, no problem. All right. Oh, I also want to speak as the Olympian from Olympic College. Our new newspaper is up and running, and you guys have been fantastic. We actually have issues coming here tomorrow, so really want to thank you guys for that. Right, thank you.
Thank you. And what else? Okay, sure. Last chance. There is no executive session tonight, so unless somebody wants to stop me, I say we stand it up.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to share, Sharon, I think, thank you for the invite. I will be out of town on Friday, so I won't be able to attend. Sorry.
We're almost out of here, John.